Good evening. I'd like to call to order our Gladstone Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 18th. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Milch.
Present.
Commissioner Labonte.
Present.
Commissioner Pat Smith. Commissioner Mercero.
Present.
Commissioner Volbada.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Present. Let's do the flag salute, please.
Let me read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This evening, we have our consent agenda and we will be approving the meeting minutes for September 20th. Also, on our regular agenda, our monthly planning report for September. Item number three will be a continued public hearing that has been postponed to November 15th. However, there is some technicalities that we need to open and then close it again. And item number four, final order to ratify appeal decision to deny home occupation license for Adam Baker Tool Company LLC, 7470, case in circle. And then item number five, public hearing file TXT dash 2022 dash 3, Gladstone zoning code amendments pertaining to middle housing land divisions and removal of design standards specific to manufactured homes in Chapter 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Court. Staff?
I think we're starting with the consent agenda.
Oh, sorry. I would entertain a motion for approving the September meeting minutes.
I reviewed the minutes. Didn't have any anything, any corrections, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second that.
Okay, Andrea Langston, excuse me, made a motion to accept the minutes and it was seconded by Commissioner Mercero. Tammy, could you do a roll call?
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Meeting minutes have been approved. Now, staff, monthly planning report?
Good evening. So in your packet, you will find the September 2022 Gladstone Monthly Planning Report. You'll find that we had someone come to the Oregon City offices to meet in person. We had many phone calls and emails with about 39. We only had two building permits with land use review, although there were some that were re-reviewed and not counted here from previous months because as they are revised, the the subject matter that pertains to planning is not impacted. But I have to review it, go through each document again to make sure that the planning regulations are not impacted by the changes made to the building design. Pre-application conference for a design review was held and a sign permit for the US Bank ATM was approved.
Okay, I think we need to, at this point for item number three, I need to open the public hearing and indicate that it's been postponed to November 15th. Is that correct? Okay. Just a moment here. Okay. I'd like to open the public hearing for file number TXT dash 2022 dash 02. Like to open it so I can make note that it has, this has been postponed to November 15th, 2022. Do I need to take a roll call vote or someone needs to make a motion now to do, close it?
Well, I'll make a motion that the hearing be continued to November 15th, 2022.
And I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Milch made the motion to postpone and continue the meeting November 15th. And Andrea Langston seconded that motion. Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Item number four, final order to ratify appeal decision to deny home occupation business license. Staff?
Thank you and good evening, commissioners. Since Police Chief Schmuber is not here tonight, we're going to have City Attorney Josh Sober go through the staff report with you and the findings for you to consider.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to meet you all virtually. This is my first time with the Planning Commission here. One procedural thing I want to note before I get into the staff report is that it seems that a notice was sent in error that referred to this evening's activities on this item as a hearing. That was an error. The record has already been closed. Planning Commission did already vote unanimously to make a decision on this matter. So written comments that were received will not be entered into the record, won't be a basis for the decision, and no new testimony is going to be taken this evening. As you know, on September 20th, 2022, the Planning Commission heard an appeal of a staff decision granting a home occupation permit to Adam Baker Tool Company. At the conclusion of that hearing, after a discussion and deliberation, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to uphold the appeal and overturn the the staff decision to grant the home occupation permit. Based on that deliberation conversation and that decision, staff repaired an order with findings to support that decision. And the Planning Commission's options tonight are to either approve that order as drafted or to make amendments to that order prior to approving it. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Does anyone have any questions, Josh?
No questions.
Okay, continue, Josh. Thank you.
That concludes my report and the recommended staff action would be to discuss the draft final order and either approve it or amend it and approve it.
Thank you very much, Josh. Discussion? Or does everyone already know how they they plan on voting?
I did have a question for Josh. Jenny, I was unable to attend this meeting last month. However, I have reviewed all of the commentary, all of the written, everything in the package. My question to you is, do I recuse myself from the vote tonight considering I wasn't present for the in-person testimony last month?
If you have reviewed all of the materials, including the recording of the hearing, you are eligible to vote this evening.
Thank you.
Commissioner Milch?
I did notice that several of us looked at particular criterion in the code and indicated whether we felt it was met or not met at last month's meeting. The one area where I felt perhaps the criteria was met is not included in this and that's appropriate. So I think that the way that our discussion has been incorporated into this document, I agree with what it has here.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Commissioner Mercero says that there is no opinion change from the last meeting, for me.
Do we want to just go ahead and do a vote?
I think someone needs to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that the Planning Commission ratified the decision made at last month's meeting to deny the home occupation business license for Adam Baker Tool Company LLC at 7470, case on circle. And that the and that the Planning Commission issued the final order as drafted to ratify this decision.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, Commissioner Milch made the motion and Commissioner, pardon? Excuse me?
Yeah, so in the Planning Commission packet online is all of the information. This has been public since last week, but we're happy to get you a copy of the order.
Okay. Commissioner Milch made a motion. Commissioner Mercero seconded. Tammy, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith? Oh, excuse me, sorry. Commissioner Mercero?
Aye.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
City Attorney, I had a question. The final order will be mailed out. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right. Onto our next item, which is number five. I'd like to open this meeting for the public hearing for file TXT dash 2022 dash 3, Gladstone zoning code amendments pertaining to middle housing land divisions and removal of design standards specific to manufactured homes in Chapter 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
Yeah.
We are going to try to, Tammy?
I'm working right there.
Perfect. Tammy sent out the PowerPoint presentation to you all. And I apologize for all of the text. I usually like to have a lot of pictures. But since we are here tonight to consider text amendments, I felt that it was more prudent to include the proposed changes for you all to review and discuss. And so we are here tonight to review those proposed changes.
All tight.
Did I mess it up with?
Nope, nope. It's, I've got a Should be good.
So tonight, we are specifically going to learn about and discuss options for manufactured homes and for middle housing land divisions that are pertaining to Senate Bill 458 and House Bill 4064. At the last meeting, we went over what House Bill 4064 requires, and that is that we treat manufactured dwellings the same as single-family dwellings. And manufactured dwellings are defined in the statutes. And they are inclusive of manufactured homes and prefabricated prefabricated buildings, as we will discuss later on. On this slide. Fantastic. So one of the items that was added to the presentation that was not included last month includes a definition for a manufactured dwelling. And this was proposed by the city attorney and included in your packet. However, I did receive a question from a commissioner that we would like to discuss with you all tonight as we look at this definition. I would love for you to ask your question so that we can all hear it.
All right, if you look at the at the line-through paragraph at the bottom of this screen, you'll see that the original definition of manufactured dwelling was based on a law, the Federal Manufactured Housing and Construction, well, I think it was the Manufactured Housing Act adopted in 1974, which strengthened the standards, the building standards, for what used to be generally referred to as mobile homes. A mobile home is a home that can be moved on wheels, not a recreational vehicle, meant to be, you know, sited permanently. But the standards for those for a number of years were considerably less than the standards for stick-built homes. And finally, the federal government passed a law that would enable them to meet higher standards. And I believe the intent of the legislature is that these homes that meet these higher standards, which are generally constructed after 1976, are the ones that we have to allow to be in, you know, treated zoning-wise as the same as other homes. And that definition of manufactured dwelling also includes what we would call prefabricated homes, or homes that were built off-site and then assembled on-site, different from the old way we used to construct homes, but increasingly a way that a lot of homes are being constructed. So my concern and the wording that we came up with for this was that the first paragraph, which is meant to be the the mobile home part of the definition of manufactured dwelling, does not make any mention of the particular Manufactured Home Act of 1974, which raised those standards. It just says, "Housing, Construction, Safety Standards Regulations in Effect at the Time of Construction." Well, a home that was constructed in 1960 probably met the standards that were in effect at the time of its construction, but it would not be, but might not be the standards in effect in 1976. So I just wondered whether we need to have some reference to that law in our definition, in the part of the definition that obviously relates to mobile homes. There may not be very many mobile homes left, but my concern is that someone would take one that was pre-1976, plop it on a piece of land and say, "You've said I could treat this the same way as any other mobile home." And that may not be what the legislature intends. They want some equity in this. There have been exclusionary zoning rules to try to exclude the kind of people that live in this kind of home. You know, we've heard that. But this is an effort to be more inclusionary, but I think there needs to be a limit. So that's the reason I raise the question.
And looking at House Bill 4064 for guidance, they specific, the language specifically says that we have to treat manufactured dwelling and a pre, or a manufactured home, excuse me, a manufactured home and a prefabricated building the same as a site-built, single-family home. So what this definition of a manufactured dwelling does is the first part takes the definition of a manufactured home and the second part takes the definition of a prefabricated building to combine it as defined in the Gladstone Municipal Code as a manufactured dwelling. The reason that's important is because our R5 zoning district and our R7.2 zoning district allows manufactured dwellings. And we have to treat both a manufactured home and a prefabricated building the same as a site-built home per House Bill 4064. And this definition allows us to do that. With Commissioner Milch's concern in mind, Attorney Josh Sober recommended a slight change to this definition that you see in front of you. And that is on that second part, that includes the prefabricated building definition, adding that, adding to the last part of that definition and that was constructed after June 15th, 1976. That way, it is clear in this definition that it does not include mobile home or residential trailer, which have different definitions in the Oregon revised statutes. And a mobile home has a different definition in the Gladstone Code.
I would support that change. I think that addresses my question.
Okay. Are there any other concerns or questions about why we are changing the definition in 1706 of a manufactured dwelling?
Commissioners, any questions?
Okay. All right.
I always thought, and I'm probably totally off-base here. If it wasn't on wheels, then it was a modular manufactured home. When it's on wheels, it's more mobile.
A lot of
That doesn't apply anymore?
It's my understanding that a lot of these come in on wheels and then the wheels are removed or shielded.
Right, because they're usually put on a foundation.
They are. They are put on a foundation that is inspected to ensure that it is safe for the building head.
Okay. Please continue.
So in the R5 and R7.2 zoning districts, we, there is a section that pertains only to manufactured dwellings. And manufactured dwellings have to meet special design standards that site-built homes don't have to meet. And so if we are to comply with House Bill 4064, we have to make sure that if we want to have any of these standards in the code, that they also apply to site-built, single-family residential homes that we think of in Gladstone. One option is to completely remove it. The other option, which sounded like what you were wanting to do during the last discussion where we discussed this, was to include some of the items from that section of the code up into the design features that apply to all of the dwellings in the R7 and R5, or R7.2 and R5 zoning districts. During that discussion, there were a couple of additional points that were requested. One is that instead of requiring only two design features, four would be included. And I want to make note that this was taken off the code online and does not reflect the changes for middle housing that are included in Ordinance 1515. So this would be for single-household dwellings and middle housing as well. Additionally, when we discussed this at a previous Planning Commission meeting, the eaves were proposed to be 12 inches instead of six. The items that were included in Section 4 that only applied to manufactured homes previously were the roof pitch and the garage or carport being a design feature. It was requested that these be included as a design feature for a site-built, single-family home or for site-built dwellings, let's say. Additionally, there were designs for foundations for any type of home. The dwelling shall be placed on an excavated, back-filled foundation and enclosed at the perimeter such that no more than 12 inches of the enclosing material is exposed above grade. And in situations where the building site has a slope grade, no more than 12 inches of the enclosing material shall be exposed on the uphill side of the home. So that allows that open daylight basement situation as seen in the item C. So it's hard to see, I tried to make different colors on this slide for the items that were moved versus the items that were completely removed in option B.
You can see.
So item A is completely removed under option B. Option, or item B in this is used in that foundation section. Item C is used in the design standards section. Item D and item E are completely removed. And then item F is moved up to the design standards. So I apologize that the colors did not make it clear. But under item B, those are the proposed changes that were previously discussed and staff would recommend that you recommend these changes to city council to be compliant with House Bill 4064.
Can you bring up the previous slide?
Yes.
I want to look at the one that had been, item E. I think some of the language on it may be outdated. I don't know if the super-good-sense rules are still current, but it does relate to energy efficiency. Do you happen to know, and I should have raised this question earlier, so you'd have time to research it, if the Manufactured Home Act, if one of the changes did include some elements of energy efficiency in terms of the exterior thermal envelope of the homes?
Yes, we are allowed to have a requirement for this energy efficiency. The concern is that when a manufactured dwelling is reviewed by the Building Codes Division, they have to use the Oregon State Building Code that uses that HUD stamp and that certification. They don't look at this additional energy standards. As a planner, I am not qualified to open up the side of a house and look at these energy efficiency standards. And so I am not sure how we could have it in the code and have it enforceable. I don't see how reality meets. And maybe Commissioner Langston has an idea.
Yeah, I was just curious. I would imagine they're probably reviewing the construction of these buildings at the facility.
Yes.
Because that would be the only way I think that it would, it would be inspected. So I imagine as they're constructing these on-site, they're having their inspectors come by at certain portions of the build to inspect the construction. So, because I would hope that there was something there protecting people to ensure that they were, they had a properly thermal envelope around their homes so they're staying cool and not getting hot in the summer or vice versa. So that would be the, and again, I don't know how we would be able to enforce that once it's on-site.
I'm not sure either. And so it's up for you all because House Bill 4064 does allow us to have something pertaining to this thermal envelope. And so it's a question of, do you all want to keep it in there? And hope that the certification process includes a review of this? Or do you want to remove it?
Well, I guess the other question is, what we're trying to get is is the uniformity of these regulations between the manufactured homes and the stick-built homes. So do we have a means of identifying whether these same standards are met in stick-built homes? That I guess you can go on-site and see it as it's being built if you're in the inspection
Right.
wing of things. You can't always see it if it's built somewhere else and brought Wing of things. You can't always see it if it's built somewhere else and brought to you unless, as Commissioner Langston says, that there's some kind of inspection. Done on site where it's being assembled.
Correct.
Yeah, typically in a stick-built home, you'd have to get a cover inspection before you put your drywall up on the inside, so you would see. All the insulation, all the wiring and whatnot. And then they would start putting the drywall up. And if your building comes and it's already put together, they don't really, I mean, unless you're asking them to open up the whole wall. Then they got to redo all the finishes and whatnot. So it's, I would imagine that there is. I don't know off the top of my head, I would imagine that there is some sort of inspection process for the manufactured homes. I'm just not familiar with it.
Okay. Did you have a question? Okay.
I don't know if this is helpful, but one thing to, that may be potentially is helpful. The language in the House Bill. Says the city may require a manufacturer certification. So it wouldn't be a inspection that would have to be performed by city staff. It would be that there is some sort of certification coming from the manufacturer. Of the structure. That it met standards that are equivalent to the low-rise residential dwelling code standards for stick-built homes.
Does anybody else have any, any more questions? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Hold on, before it's, the hearing continues on to a different subject.
Okay.
But also, it would be great for staff to know whether you would like us to amend the amendments to include that language. Prior to going to the city council. And so the recommendation at the end would include, as amended by the planning commission. Yeah, to include that, that energy efficiency certification or something like that. So it would be good to hear from you, not necessarily a vote, but whether you would like us to amend the amendments to include that.
You'd just like a consensus to see where we're at. Commissioner Mercero, how would you feel about, where are you at with this?
I would recommend making the addition. And I was thinking that. Whether it's right or wrong. That a footnote. Might be applicable. To clarify whatever issues you had on that.
Okay.
Commissioner?
I think it makes sense to, to, to keep it in there, I believe.
Okay, Jennifer?
Yes, I think it would be wise to include verbiage regarding certification. I am also not terribly familiar with manufactured home versus stick-built and obviously we know. Permitting inspections for stick-built and I think by requiring. An inspection of similar standard from the manufactured home puts it on equal playing field and, and adds to the safety of the home buyer.
Commissioner Milch?
I agree with Commissioner Volbada.
Commissioner Langston?
Yeah, the one thing that I'm kind of familiar with, with modular is framing panels, so framing walls prior. To the, they just get set onsite and they do show up. Approved and stickered that they have been inspected. So I definitely think it's a good idea. At least have something certifying that it was, it meets building standard or code.
And I do agree with making the amendments and also regarding the certification as well. So, there you go.
We have heard it.
Question.
Yes.
Regarding manufactured homes. Are they? Inspected? Such as a new home by a third party? Does anybody know that?
It could be the jurisdiction of where they're, they're being built. I have heard of. When we've done modular wall panels, our inspectors had driven down to the, to the facility to review. So I think there's a handful of different ways and it can be third party too. I think, I think it just depends on how maybe they go through the permitting process and what. That municipality will, will allow them to do.
Okay. We will amend. Sec, chapter seventeen point one two and chapter seventeen point one zero to include. Language from House Bill forty sixty four regarding certification of energy efficiency similar to. What is done for single-family site-built homes.
Okay, please continue, staff.
Okay.
Onto the next.
Yes. The next section, you have not seen in a PowerPoint before, but is regarding Senate Bill four fifty eight. And it is for middle housing land divisions. So remember, House Bill two thousand one requires that we allow middle housing in our low-density residential zoning districts. So our, our. Seven point two and R five now allow middle housing developments. Senate Bill four fifty eight requires that we allow middle housing land divisions. When the developers have building permits for middle housing or after that middle housing is built. So the first thing that we need to do is to look at a chapter seventeen point oh six. Because currently there is no definition of middle housing land division. When I went through chapter seventeen point oh six, I found that during the amendments for House Bill two thousand one. Family was replaced with household. And that makes sense for all of the amendments that you all saw. But household alphabetically does not start with the letter F. And so in this text amendment package. Household is moved down the line to be consistent and be in the area with the Hs. So. It would be seventeen point oh six point two three one. Assuming that Tammy does not find that seventeen point oh six point two three one was previously used for some other definition. And so it is no change to that definition, just a change in the location. However, there is a, an addition of a middle housing land division definition. And it is proposed to be the partition or subdivision of a lot of record that is developed or proposed to be developed. With middle housing dwelling units. The type of middle housing developed on the original lot of record is not altered by the middle housing land division. And middle housing land divisions are expedited land divisions that are subject to the process outlined in Oregon Revised Statutes one ninety seven point three seventy five. So again, that is developed, meaning that the middle housing is already developed or proposed to be developed because they have valid. Building permits for middle housing land, middle housing development. Now, the type of middle housing developed on the original law of record is not altered by the middle housing land division. Gladstone chose to allow detached duplexes and detached triplexes if the law allowed it. So. Just because you divide one dwelling unit from another. Doesn't make it now. Eligible for another three units. If it already had two, then it can't have more. So this, this definition means that the, the. Division of land does not change the type of middle housing that is developed. Does that make sense? Any other questions? No, okay, yes.
Can you give us a short answer to what is the difference between an expedited land division and a non-expedited land division?
I am going to save that because many of the slides that are all text at the end of the presentation are to that. Effect, that they explain that. Or they give me a format to explain that. So Senate Bill. Four fifty eight, I apologize for that error in the text. Is pretty prescriptive on how we allow middle housing land divisions. And we shall approve a tentative plan for a middle housing land division if the application includes these things. And so separate utilities for each dwelling unit. I propose easements necessary for each dwelling unit on the plan. Exactly one dwelling unit on each resulting lot or parcel. And evidence demonstrating that the structures are middle housing. And how they will comply with the residential specialty code or the building code. So to. Include this language that we have to allow. Section seventeen point three zero point oh four oh was created to. Identify middle housing land divisions and what they are required to provide in addition to what is submitted for a partition or a subdivision. Because a middle housing land division could be a partition or a subdivision. Because a partition is three or fewer lots and a subdivision is four or more lots. So if you have four, if you have a quadplex on a lot of record and you divide it so that each lot has one dwelling unit. Then it would be a subdivision. However, there are a couple of items that you have to submit. For a middle housing land division that you don't necessarily have to submit for a partition or a subdivision. And it's explained in this section. Now, there is one area that is duplicated in your packet, and that's the easements. This is one of the things that we can. Or, or that we must. Provide for middle housing land divisions and it's included here, but it's also included in this, the general development standards where easements are talked about. So when we get to that section, I will ask whether you all want it in both locations. One of the items that you see here is. That we can prohibit a middle housing land division, the land involved in the middle housing land division. From being further divided. So there are limits to what we can regulate, but this is one of those. We also don't have to allow accessory dwelling units on the resulting lot. So remember, if the property was developed with a quadplex and you separated into four dwelling units. If it was a site-built home that was just developed under normal, not middle housing regulations, but the, the normal process. Which is also the process for middle housing. You could have an ADU. But you can't have an ADU for a quadplex. And remember, the type of housing is not changed by this middle housing land division. So if you can't have a ADU on a quadplex. Do we want to allow an ADU for the separated dwelling unit? Probably not, because it's a very small lot. But. It's up for discussion.
Embarrassingly, may I ask for a five-minute recess? Can I make a motion for a five-minute recess?
Sure.
Okay, great.
We'll pause for a moment.
I believe we can resume our meeting now.
And this appears to be a duplicate slide. It says exactly what we discussed earlier, except that I did not note that the location of each middle housing dwelling unit and any other development on the lot or parcel. Will be identified on the plan as well as any locations or areas to be retained under common ownership. So there may be a situation if, like say, a cottage cluster. Where they have the, the common courtyard that was to be used by all. That may be in common ownership even after a middle housing land division. And then there is a provision where a city or county may add conditions of, to the approval. And one of that, so. When you have a plat submitted, a map of the property, there is a title block. And oftentimes, the land use decision that approved the land division is noted in that title block. We can also require that it be noted that it was a middle housing land division. And we can also require that the notation includes that. It may not be divided further. And so that is the language that is provided and these are may's. So we don't have to, but we can. There is also the ability that if there was a. A partition. That was approved, that then they got building permits for middle housing. And but there wasn't a final plat recorded. They could. Combine the final plat and the middle housing land division into one plat. What that does is it makes it so that the applicant doesn't have to pay a recording fee for the survey twice. So if they're going to divide it and then they decide, well, we're going to put middle housing and we're going to go through a middle housing land division. Then they could move forward with the middle housing land division and file a final plat. For the middle housing land division that's combined with the previous approved. Partition or subdivision in one plat. Again, something that you can choose to approve or include or not. That just keeps people from having to pay twice. One of the items that is included in seventeen point three zero point oh four oh. Is an extended review time. In the section that applies to hearings where most of the process is identified. It is noted that. The middle housing land division is following the provisions of ORS one ninety seven point three six zero. And one of those provisions is this. However, we have seen how the Oregon Revised Statutes change over time. And how people don't often go to the Oregon Revised Statutes. So staff are proposing to include this extended review time. Here, so that someone doesn't have to go to the Oregon Revised Statutes to find it. However, there are so many changes. However, there are so many changes in the hearing process that the extended review time is included in this section that only applies to middle housing land divisions. Any questions? Okay. Um, in addition to the middle housing land divisions that are not subject to certain criteria in section seventeen point three two and seventeen point three four. So there are going to be changes to those sections to exempt the middle housing land division from some small items. While there are changes being made to those sections, I wanted to see if the planning commission is supportive of making a slight modification to the approval window of a subdivision. So, um, recently, the implementation window for a design review was extended to two years, right? Um, and there was a, uh, partition that the, or, or there, there, there have been other instances where it has been difficult for applicants to build the sidewalks, get the easements, record the plats within one year. And so there is a question to you, would you like to extend that? Because middle housing land divisions are going to have an implementation window of three years. To be consistent with a middle housing land division, a subdivision implementation window would need to be expanded to three years. In addition, instead of just submitting the, um, the, the tentative plan to the city, the proposed language would mean that the, the applicant actually finalizes the plat and records it within that three-year process. So right now, they can submit the tentative plan, um, within one year of the day of final decision. But this, within these three years, they would need to record the final plat with the, um, county clerk and the Clackamas County Surveyor's Office. There is a provision in this that upon request, the, uh, approval period may be renewed once by the planning commission. Um, it was asked by the city attorney whether it, if this is just going to be approved, if asked for, does it need to be in there? Um, does it need to come before the planning commission to be requested? Um, if the three-year period, um, is sufficient for finishing the plat, recording it, do we need this, uh, extension? It is not allowed for middle housing land divisions. After the three years, the middle housing land divisions are final. So removing it would be consistent with the middle housing land divisions, but it would be a, a change to how the code currently is.
So, uh, so it sounds like it, it was a one-year that could be renewed. We're, we're talking about making it three-year as the standard. So I don't see the need to have a renewal of a three-year. Uh, going from one to three seems to be that, that will, should take care of the worst-case scenario, I hope. I hope things don't continue to slow down. I, I think I'd like to think we're going in the opposite direction. Uh, but, uh, no, I, I understand by changing it from one to three, I think having a renewal option is probably not necessary.
Okay. Well, that will be
I would agree with that as well.
Okay. If all of you agree, then that would be another modification that you proposed prior to it going to city council. So in addition to the energy efficiency certification for manufactured homes, there would be a slight change to seventeen point three two. Commissioner Labonte?
Well, I, I guess why not have, have, have it? Uh, if we are extending to three years, if there some situation comes up with a home with a property owner or something, what would be the disadvantage in having an extension and allowing for that in some extreme circumstance?
Well, it, it just would have to come up before the planning commission again, uh, as it's, uh, at least as the language is read this way. I know if it could be done at an administrative level, is that also possible? Um, uh, but the, the city administrator or his or her designee or some language to that effect, or the planning city planner, we will have our own city planner at the time this is implemented.
It could be modified to be consistent with the language of the code. It would need to be the city administrator or designee.
I'm, I'm not sure if I see any issue with having an extension and
The only issue is if the regulations change. Um, or if the, um, transportation system plan changes and the, uh, the designation, the functional class of the road changes or so that if any of the city design standards or code changes, instead of having three years, you now have six years, which makes those changes more likely. However, there is, they submitted it under these certain rules and they would be able to continue under those certain rules if, um, if approved, um, or if requested.
If I may, so is the extension now three years or just a one-year extension? So would, could we maintain that one-year extension?
Yeah.
And perhaps it's all for naught, but I'm just wondering if that, that might help out some folks.
So am I hearing, um, from the planning commission that upon a request, the, uh, the three-year period may be extended by one year approved by the city administrator or designee? Or does it still need to come before a planning commission?
I like what you just said. That would be. The rest of you, how do you feel about that?
I like that one better. Um, that was my main concern was, uh, six years total. A lot can happen, and if you're grandfathered in in previous codes, um, there, there, there's not a whole lot we can do. Um, so yeah, I like the, the three years with the one-year extension by, uh, city admin.
Commissioner Mills, how do you feel about it?
Yeah, that seems like a good compromise. And, uh, and yeah, I think Andrew was right. There could be circumstances, uh, unforeseen that would require some consideration of a longer term and, and, uh, but hopefully it wouldn't go much beyond that.
Andrel, how do you feel about it?
No, I, I'm, I'm fine with that, uh, the upon request. Um, but I also would be fine if it wasn't there either, so. I think three years, good amount of time.
Commissioner Mercerow?
I only have one question in that. Would it be appropriate? It doesn't really say here that the, when the planning commission wishes to change it. Whether it be on the last day or at the first of the agreement or halfway through or whatever, uh, i- is that a reasonable question to, to state when?
So you are asking that, um, prior to the three-year expiration date, um, upon request, the three-year period uh, may be extended for no more than one year by the city administrator or designee? That way, if it expires, they can't come six months later and request an extension? Is that what you're questioning?
That, that's one way of looking at it. It just seems like it doesn't really stipulate when the planning commission ha- needs to make the change. Needs to request the change, that may be it.
Okay.
And that's up for question to the council here, commissioner too.
So you're saying if after one year, the, the, the developer says, you know, we're gonna need four years to do this, can we ask for a one-year extension right now to add to our three years to get four? Or do you have to wait till the three years are up or almost up before you ask for an extension? Is that kind of what you're getting at? At what point in that three-year process can you say we'd like to apply for one more year?
It seems appropriate to stipulate when the commission can request the change.
It could be at any time during the three-year approval period? Or it could be prior to the three-year approval period ending? Yeah. Or does it need to be that last month? Do they need to put it on their calendar?
Yeah, and, or, and does it mean that, um, yeah, because if it, if it requires getting attorney and preparing for a hearing to do it, uh, you know, you don't want, that's something you don't want to put on to the, off to the last minute. Uh, also, is the one-year extension from the date that it's approved by the planning commission? Or is it one year from the expiration date to the original? I assume it's the latter. It just extends your expiration date to the following calendar year.
Yes.
Does that answer your question?
Well, I believe there needs to be something, except when it can happen, when it needs to happen by the planning commission.
I, I feel like it would, um, if I was in that position, uh, I would probably wa- wait and request that, that, uh, extension until I've determined that I truly need it. And if I came in a year after, you know, being granted, um, that approval, one year after getting it, it would show kind of intent that, you know, unless I knew there was some sort of defining information that I had that I could present to state my case. Not just like, oh, I just want another year. You know, I, I would, I feel like you'd be open, opening yourself up to having that one-year extension, um, decline or, um, not approved.
That ju- this just made me think of something. Um, I can, I think I know what you're getting at. Like, we need to have some sort of verbiage indicating that, you know, you need to do this no later than a hundred and twenty days before the expiration date to file the application, et cetera, et cetera, for the extension. Um, that way you don't get last-minute situations, because especially if there's something where there needs to be, you know, attorney or whatever involved, you should allow for whether it be a hundred and twenty or ninety days prior to the expiration date. What do you think of that?
I mean, who's, who's responsible, responsibility to tell them when, I mean, if they're on their, if they're taking care of their business, they should understand that they, they do have to be here, so why are we?
I see your point.
Yeah.
But I do agree that, you know, uh, a builder can get into a situation, realize that, you know, two years into it, he, he needs to file for an, for an additional year. But what I'm saying is for the people to wait till the last minute, they, if they, when they do the application, they need to be aware that they can't file for extension, you know, two days before the expiration date is what I'm trying to say.
Sure.
Or for that matter, the last day.
Yeah.
For, for a testator plus.
Yeah, I, I think that would be important to stipulate a timeframe that's reasonable.
May I ask, how, how long would something like that take for staff to actually deal with it, the, uh, extension?
Five minutes unless there was a land use application.
Oh, wow, okay.
Cause we, we, it could be a simple email. Of you, it, we would look back at the original land use approval. We would look at the date. We would see if it was within that three-year approval period. We would, um, make no changes to the, the request or the approval, and we would say, yes, you may have a, a one-year extension.
Sure.
If there's an application that has to come before the planning commission, then it's more, uh, staff time and more effort on behalf of staff and the applicant.
Okay. So it sounds like, um, I know we're, we're tending towards having this be more, uh, a staff admin versus coming, uh, in front of planning commission. So I guess my question to you guys is like, best case, worst case, uh, you know, these guys just file for a permit, uh, to do this, and they're like, okay, I, right immediately after they fill this out, they're like, I'm gonna want another year. Do we have a problem with that? Versus on the last day, they file, on the last day before expiration, they file for, you know, a request for an additional year. It takes staff five minutes to process that. Do we have a problem with that?
No, but when there's a land use issue, that takes a lot more time.
That's true.
So I don't know how that would be written. Um, you're giving me a look. How would that be written, uh, so that it would be clearly stated that in the event of a land use situation that would require additional staff time, what would the timeframe be then?
I, I was responding, um, to comments from the planning commission that included, uh, an application.
An application, okay.
So I, I was, again, they, they submitted it under the rules. They got approval from the planning commission for this, uh, subdivision. Nothing is changing. They're just requesting a one-year extension. Um, the only additional time it would take staff is if a land use application was filed and came before the planning commission.
Okay.
And our question kind of clarified what I've been suggesting. Is it okay to do it one day late?
Not with the way it's worded. That's why, um, upon a request, comma, within the approval period, comma, the three-year period may be extended for no more than one year by the city administrator or designee. That way it's, they have to request within that, that three-year approval period, or it's done.
Over, yep. They'll have to come back before the planning commission.
They would.
Just like resubmitting an application.
And it would have to be under the current regulations.
Right.
If there were any changes.
But it has to be approved.
Not necessarily, but the request has to be submitted.
It, it has to be, let me rephrase that. It has to be answered before the end date.
So if you dropped it in the mail or, uh, put it in your guys' drop box you get it the next business day. But it maybe got times, oh.
It got timestamped, uh, within business hours of the day was approved. Uh, would it still be considered, I guess, is what she's asking?
If planning commission feels, um, like staff can work with the city attorney on the final language, we will get something for the, the city council to consider? Or we can sit here and discuss all of this, um?
Yeah, we're getting into the weeds now. We are. We need to move on. Okay.
Good question.
Yeah.
All, all very good questions.
Okay. Please continue.
Okay. So do you feel okay with staff working with the city attorney on, on finalizing the language? Based on what we have heard and discussed?
I do, yes. Anybody have any objections to it?
I have no problem myself.
Okay.
No.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right. So as mentioned, um, a middle housing land division can either be a partition or a subdivision. Currently, in the partition section of the Gladstone Municipal Code, there is no expiration section of the Gladstone municipal code, there is no expiration of approval for a partition. The issue with this is there have been partitions from 1980s that have come back to light. There's no expiration. There's regulations that were adopted in 2007 for the habitat conservation area that now has limits to a partition that contains a habitat conservation area. If the partition was approved prior to the habitat conservation area, it's valid because there's no expiration date. Even if the resulting lots don't meet the current regulations. So to be in line with both the middle housing land divisions and subdivisions, staff are recommending an expiration of a partition approval. Because there are certain circumstances where it may impact land use in Gladstone. It would be our recommendation that it be the same language as the subdivision one. So what is in front of you is what the subdivision one said minus the modifications that you all just requested. Any problem with that? Okay.
Just a question. The reason you're bringing this up, you mentioned that some of these go back to 1980. Is this going to retroactively give an expiration date to those? Okay, okay.
It would just provide an expiration date for any partition application submitted after the effective date of this text amendment.
Thank you.
So after the city council adopts it, after the appeal period ends. And so nothing changes with those that were previously approved.
Okay.
Their grandfathered in.
Correct. So when crafting the amendments related to middle housing land divisions, the design standards for land divisions and property line adjustments came into play. And that is primarily because the, there are items in these design standards that cannot apply to middle housing land divisions. However, with that review of the general standards, the appeal section and the hearing section, it came to light that there is a whole chunk of text in these sections that are inconsistent with other examples in the code. So for instance, the appeal process for a city administrator or designee decision is located in 17.94, which is the hearing section. The appeal process for planning commission decisions are included in 17.92, which is a section on appeals. So to be consistent with having all the appeal language and direction for appeals in one location, staff have proposed to move this section to be in the appeals section. No changes to the text, just a change in the location. So it's consistent with planning commission decision appeals. Senate Bill 458 includes a filing fee for appeals. It's in there. It is different than the filing fee that the Clackamas County Planning Division has. And currently, because planning is provided by Clackamas County, the city of Gladstone adopts the planning review fee schedule at the budget time. So it's consistent with Clackamas County. So it's important to note that whatever fee schedule Gladstone has, Senate Bill 458 has a filing fee of an appeal to a middle housing land division of $300. So it is spelled out here in the appeal section. You'll also notice that that language from 17.94 is included here. One other change from how appeals are currently in the code is that middle housing land divisions or expedited land divisions have a 14-day appeal period. And all other administrative decisions and planning commission decisions have an appeal period of 15 days. So there's one of your day truncations or reductions.
I have a question on that real quick.
Yes.
14 business days, 14 day days?
It's day days. From the time it's mailed. So if the planning commission decision is signed a week later, and it's mailed the next day, then the 15-day period starts then.
Are you suggesting that we change it to 15 days or?
We can't.
Oh, we can't, I see.
We can't. Now, you could change the appeal period for other decisions to be 14 days. But you can't change the 14 days to 15. But it's a change.
Okay, thank you.
There are some changes in 17.94 to include middle housing land divisions for consistency. To try to limit the amount of text that you see tonight. It's included in your packet in detail.
Yes.
But we are going to talk about some of it because of the expedited process that it goes through. In addition, because we had to add middle housing land divisions as a city administrator decision, we looked at consistency with other sections and found that habitat conservation areas and floodplain management areas are reviewed as city administrator decisions. And it's identified in their particular sections as city administrator review. But it wasn't included in 17.94. So for consistency, staff are proposing to add G and H. Similar to F. Now, all of this text is new. However, I did not make it red to save your eyes a little bit. So what I wanted to point out here is state law for all other land use applications gives planners 30 days to review an application for completeness. We receive the application, we have 30 days to review it. This expedited process for middle housing land divisions limits that to 21 days. If the application is complete when first submitted, or the applicant submits the requested additional information within 180 days, it's the same process as other land use applications. When an application is deemed incomplete, applicants have 180 days to make it complete, or the land use review begins based on with the material that is provided. Again, all of this text is new. It is the notice of the application for a middle housing land division goes to property owners within 100 feet of the site. That is similar to administrative decisions of all other types. The content of the notice is also similar to the notice for all the other types. So I did not include that text here.
May I ask a question about the 100 feet? Is that 100 feet from the absolute border or from the middle of the property?
It's from the property boundary.
The property boundary, that's how it's determined, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you.
The one addition to the notice that is not found in other other notices is that we have to summarize the expedited land division being made. Because it's a specific type. Normally, we would provide a a summary of what is being proposed. And this is just very specific to the land division decision. Other ways that it's expedited is that when the let me, let me take a step back. A middle housing land division is a weird application type. It is a city administrator decision. But notice is sent to neighbors that the application has been submitted. Currently, neighbors are provided with notice of a decision, but not an opportunity to provide comments because city administrator permits are very objective. There are standards, there's nothing subjective about the criteria. It's met or it's not. And so the neighbors are given an opportunity to appeal it if they oppose the decision. But it's a land use application that comes before you is required to have a 20-day comment period. So neighbors within 200 feet of a subject site of an application that you all are considering receive notice of the public hearing 20 days prior to the public hearing. So this is a weird hybrid between an administrative decision and a planning commission decision in the Gladstone code. State law usually makes cities have a decision on a land use application within 120 days of receiving the application. So drop dead, we have to have a decision out. It's good public service. It makes sure that it doesn't go forever. Well, the expedited land use review period is 63 days. It's even shorter. Yes.
And and if you fail to meet it in that time, is it automatically approved by default? It's not like a like one of those gun background check laws where if you don't do it within two days, yeah, yeah, it's different.
The applicant has recourse.
Okay.
To make you act.
All right.
But it has to go through a process that is often long. So yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Senate Bill 458 says that we shall not hold a hearing on the application. So middle housing land division, that's why it's under the city administrator review, because a public hearing is not an option. If they meet all the criteria that are objective, then they are allowed to have the land division. So there's a lot in there.
There's a lot for the city administrator in there.
So staff recommends that the planning commission recommends that the city council considers and adopts these amendments as modified by the planning commission related to manufactured home and stick-built homes and middle housing land divisions. In addition, the staff recommends adding language related to the optional items in Senate Bill 458 and the expiration of partitions and recording of final plots.
Is that all?
That's all. And I apologize that the recommendation is not all on one slide for both sections.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second.
Commissioner Mercierau made the motion and Langston seconded the motion. Hearing is closed at 7:59 PM. Okay, any discussion? I know that's a lot to take in.
I think for the sake of members of the public who might be watching this, we talked a lot about partitions and not so much the purpose of them or what they're meant to accomplish. A lot of the examples you described, for example, the quadplex. And when you talked about dividing it, it was what I'm picturing in my mind is four individual units. But we need to be clear, these can still be attached units. And a partition merely allows each half or each fourth of the the building to to be on its own set of land and therefore could be owned individually by one person. That's that's much, this enables home ownership of a portion of a middle housing type unit, which involves multiple dwelling areas within one building or could be detached on one piece of land originally and then partitioned into more.
Yes.
So part of the reason we're doing this is it not only enables an increased quantity of homes on the same land that we have, but an increased quantity of homes that could potentially be owned individually outright, not just as a rental unit. So it helps to achieve some of our long-term housing goals. And and that's, you know, put it in that broader context of why we're going to all this trouble to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we talked through a lot of the details during your presentation. Thank you for letting us and answering all of our questions. Yeah, I think as modified during this work session, I think it meets a lot of like all of our goals as a city and moving forward. So I'm happy with it.
Do you have any other questions or discussion? If not, I'm gladly entertain a motion to make a decision.
Do they have to be two different ones?
How would you, how would you suggest that we?
That may be the easiest, so you can see the two separate recommendations. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I believe we will see what Joy recommended or at least listed sometime in the future, whether it be a month or whatever. And whatever you mention as changes will be written in red. And in fact, the draft recommendation will be dated 10/18 versus all the other changes on 8, 16, and 909. So we'll be able, we don't have to read through the other ones, but we need to review.
Can I clarify something?
Sure.
Tonight is a public hearing for these text amendments. The, if you recommend that the city council consider and adopt the amendments as modified by the planning commission, you won't see it again unless you continue the public hearing. And so
We've already closed the public hearing.
Yeah, you already closed it. And so you won't see it again to act on it. But you might But you might, you will see it in the city council packet. Um, and you will be able to review the modifications that uh, staff finalize for the city council to uh, consider. Um, but you will not be uh, making a decision on it at a later time unless something changes.
Cause the city council may accept and or want to modify more.
Yeah.
We're passing this on to them. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Mercero?
I've been in this uh, routine for a few years. And it seems like something down the line will come up again and ask when the changes for me.
The, the draft date on the documents will be dated ten eighteen twenty twenty-two. So you know that the version that you are looking at is what was modified by the planning commission and not necessarily what was in your packets or what was dated in August.
That's all I wanted to make sure.
Okay.
And may I just comment, I know that we made a motion to close, but we didn't vote. Um, so it, it, technically it was still open here.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't.
Take a vote at this point, so there is a motion on the table to close the public hearing.
So this would be a time for anybody who might want to extend it to make a motion, I suppose.
So I will follow up, it's, but there's a motion and a second, so I'll follow up now. Uh, Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Public hearing closed at eight oh five.
Okay, I have a, a motion.
Okay.
All right, I move that Gladstone Planning Commission recommend the city council consider and adopt the amendments as modified by the planning commission tonight related to manufactured homes to be consistent with the requirements for site-built homes in response to House Bill four zero six four.
A second. Motion was made by Commissioner Milch and seconded by Jennifer. Can we do a roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Hi.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. And now you want to, go ahead, Michael.
And I was second.
Excellent.
Uh, I move that the Gladstone Planning Commission recommend the city council consider and adopt uh, amendments as modified by the planning commission tonight related to middle housing land divisions and expiration of partition and subdivision approvals, including adding language related to the optional items in Senate Bill four fifty-eight and adding language related to the expiration of partitions and recording of final plots.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Milch and seconded by Andrew Langston. Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Langston?
Hi.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Hi.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Do, do we have any business from the audience, the public? Do we have anyone that wants to speak?
No, we have not received any comment or request to speak.
Okay, then business from the planning commission. I'm going to start with Jennifer, please.
Um, I guess I just had a question real quick. Um, I remain in the same industry, but I recently changed a job. Is there anything that I need to do on the admin side to make, to update anything?
I think you can send an email to the city recorder
Yep.
on that and we'll take care of it.
Great, we'll do.
Commissioner Milch?
Nothing.
Commissioner Langston?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Mercero?
Nothing.
Commissioner Andrew?
Yes, um, if I may ask a question, uh, just for some clarification regarding um, um, as it kind of falls under our purview, I guess, the uh, political signs on properties. Um, as far as the, do we have a rule regarding the distance from streets for political signs? And are there rules about how many signs we can have on a property? Can I get clarification on what that is by anybody here?
We do have sign code.
Yes, we do.
One of us is looking it up as we speak. I think it's two signs.
Okay.
I thought it was three.
I think it's two.
Okay. Not on the parking strip, and it has to be, is it ten feet from the sidewalk?
That's what we're looking up right now.
Okay.
Uh, the Supreme Court had a decision in twenty fifteen that we can't regulate signs based on content. So we can't say a election sign is different than a pet grooming sign. Um, so the, the sign section does have exemptions that do not require a sign permit. And, and so the planners don't see um, sign permits for these small uh, temporary signs. Um, and the, the exemptions include temporary signs and A-frame signs in residential districts. However, just because it doesn't require a sign permit doesn't mean it doesn't have to meet all the other requirements in the code.
And may I ask those requirements, uh, th- this stems from a slightly disheartening conversation I had with a current counselor regarding signs. And the uh, proper location of signs, so I was hoping for some specifics on that. And essentially, this individual had mentioned that the police department isn't going to enforce it, which I understand. So they are going to continue putting signs where they know that they're not supposed to. And I just wanted to just mention from business from the board and those of us who are public officials uh, that I, I hope that as we perhaps put signs on our property that we're mindful of some of the rules and that we can hopefully lead by example and have some integrity in this matter. Uh, as minor as it may be, I think it's important for us to kind of step up if in fact the rule
Tammy?
does apply.
Seventeen point five two oh six oh, the prohibited signs um, has some guidance. Uh, a sign cannot obstruct the vision clearance um, of a driveway or an intersection. Um, it, it cannot be in the public right-of-way unless it's a government-owned or government-maintained sign. It can't be affixed to a tree or a utility pole. And then there are other standards as well.
Commissioner Labonte, I know the police department and code enforcement are enforcing
Okay.
signs. And so if you want to send me a concern, I'm happy to look into that. And I also believe that in the current newsletter, we put information about what you can and can't do with political sign activity. But yes, we are enforcing sign code.
Okay, you're right. And I know that, that, that's a difficult thing to do and there's other and, and I don't even, and you know, if this city wants to change that rule or whatever, I just would like to see some leadership, uh, you know, and integrity with folks with their sign placement. That's all. Thank you.
And I have nothing to share this evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Commissioner Milch made the motion to adjourn the meeting and it was seconded by Andrew Langston. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Hi.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes, meeting is adjourned at eight thirteen P M.